All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're just gathering here, so if you'll just give us one moment and we will begin. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of October 2nd, 2019 is called to order. It would be in order to call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item of business for this evening is the workshop presentation. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell, who will introduce this evening's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will conduct our board monitoring update of Board Policy 1.2 succeeding in a constantly changing world. Our Chief Research and Accountability Officer, Michael Reynolds, will present and will be assisted by our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Marla Shepherd.
Good evening, members of the public, Board Chairman Manser, members of the board, Dr. Bedell, and Cabinet. So today, we're going to go over Board Policy Monitoring 1.2, which is College and Career So college and career readiness is clearly, you know, getting our kids ready to succeed in an everly changing and constantly changing world. So some of the metrics that we're going to be going over today will be aligned with what DESI views as successful college and career readiness preparation. So those are going to be our advanced courses, our college and career readiness assessments, our graduation rates, and our placement rates. A quick reminder, Standard 1.3 is our college and career readiness assessment standard. The standards that DESI views as acceptable are listed on the left are the ACT and the SAT encompass, which are college entrance exams, our ASVAP, which is an acronym for Armed Services Vocational Assessment Battery, which is basically a military entrance exam, the Accuplacer, which gets students into our middle college and junior college programs, and the ACT Work Keys, which is a stackable credential that lets you enter the workforce with a little bit of a leg up on your peers. And DESI does afford us proportional allocation, so if you score within certain ranges, you get a little bit of a different weight that factors into the calculation. And you see those above. A raw participation gets you a .25 per student, and you can get up to a 1.25 proportioned allocation per student. So basically, that means if you take the ACT and score 25 or above, 26 or above, you would get the 1.25 per student. And we'll see how that plays out a little bit later in some of our data representations. So what we see here is three years running data of our Standard 1.3 that takes all of those assessments into consideration. And it's broken out, the ACT, the Work Keys, we do have very minimal SAT participation in the Midwest, the Compass exam, which was retired and replaced with the Accuplacer, the ASVAP, and then students who did not actually have a CCR assessment. What's very critical about this data that we're showing you right now is KCPS currently has a lot of appeals on file with DESI that are not represented in this. So, and what that means is, a lot of this information is given to DESI by third parties. So we don't actually turn in our ACT data to DESI. DESI receives that directly from ACT. But when a student doesn't fill out on their ACT application that they are attending Kansas City Public Schools, that information never gets to DESI and is not directed back towards our scores. So then, it is dependent upon our team to go and see what scores, what paper scores we have, what scores DESI did not receive, and then we do an appeal. So those appeals will be reflected on our final APR score and our final calculation for Standard 1.3. We are giving a renewed focus on the ASVAP. You see our decline in our proportionate scores for the ASVAP from 2017 to 2019. It was mandated in 2017. The students participating in that assessment has slipped dramatically up to last year, and we are putting a renewed focus on our graduates taking that assessment. This is the exact same data represented, a little bit differently, and this is broken down by school. As you see, the ACT is the major proportion of our scores. We do give the ACT as a census administration to all of our juniors, but this doesn't really cover all of our kids, because we know we have high level of mobility, we have compulsory education up to age 21, and we have a lot of kids who basically just don't show up for the makeup. But this is a large portion of our scores are represented by the ACT, and you see that by school. And Central High School, I have to give them a little bit of a shout out here, they took the ASVAP very seriously, and you see how that paid dividends for them and their scores as opposed to some of the other high schools that are represented here. Standard indicator 3.4 is our advanced courses. So these are AP or Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate or IB, Project Lead the Way, which is like a STEM pre-engineering program, that's PLTW, and IRCs, which are industry-recognized credentials, which come out of our CTE program. If you earn a B or greater and just participate in these, you get the one proportioned allocation per student, but the AP and the IB gives us the opportunity to have a 1.25 proportioned allocation per student, and we'll look at that once again a little bit later in this So how do we do by school? We saw Central Academy go up, we had a couple go up, a couple go down. So when we see Lincoln College Prep go from 112 to 116 to 117%, most of us realize that 100% is the whole, but this is where that 1.25 proportionate weight comes in. So the way we would interpret that 117 is that the vast majority of students who took the IB exam scored a four or greater, which placed them on the 1.25 portion of the rubric. So we see Lincoln College Prep really knocking it out, but some of our other schools will start to get this weight as our students who took the AP exam matriculate forward and eventually graduate. Because something that's very important to take into consideration when we're looking at these scores is if we have 1,000 juniors take the ACT, the only ones that actually get represented are the students that walk across the stage. So any students that score high, any students that take the exam and either drop out, transfer out, we do not get credit for those students with DESI. So this is the same data, again, represented very, very, very minutely, or at a high level of minutia. So we have the AP exam, and if we go over to Lincoln, we see two point, I'm having a hard time reading. Sorry, that's a little bit small for me. There's a lot of stuff up there, guys. These are all the different ways we can earn points. The AP exam, the AP class, IB exam, IB course, dual credit, dual enroll, IRC, and Project Lead the Way. So of note, when we are looking at these different proportionate scores, is that we did have some personnel issues at Manual Career and Tech, which caused two of our most populated courses to not have the ability to actually give the end-of-course exam that would filter into that IRC. So that's why some of our IRC scores have dropped a little bit. We also lost some instructors that were certified to teach dual credit. So we saw some of our dual credit scores from three years ago really narrowed down where we only had one acceptable dual credit course in KCPS last year. You guys have seen this slide before, so this is an unduplicated count of advanced course participation for 11th and 12th graders. So, you know, we just want to keep seeing this go up, and as we've instituted more AP classes, it's important to note that those are at the freshman and sophomore levels. So once again, those students won't be represented in these aggregate totals until they matriculate Here's a more granular look at our AP data. So we have SY19 and SY18 here, and these are the number of students who sat for the tests. It's very important to note that we pulled Lincoln out. We went from 207 to 274, so we've increased so much the kids who are actually sitting and taking these exams. And this isn't just juniors and seniors, this is all of Kansas City Public School, 9 through 12. So a lot of this data will end up being represented in our APR as these students matriculate forward and eventually graduate from Kansas City Public Schools. So the other half of advanced courses where we can get a proportionate weight is International Baccalaureate. And we know we only have that at one school, Lincoln College Prep, but they made some significant gains last year. You see that the IB diploma pass rates have almost doubled, very commendable, above the national average of IB diploma pass rates. We've also seen the mean IB exam score raise from 4.5 to 4.6, which is very significant. We're also working on getting more students involved in the IB program. This May, we expect, or last May, 32 full IB students tested. Next year should be 38, and we should be up to 53 the year after. And they're also continually adding courses to be responsive to our population. You do see that the heritage language courses in Spanish and French are being offered to serve some of our native speakers and to serve some of our schools that filter into Lincoln College Prep. Graduation rate. So here's our four-year graduation rates. We did raise a touch from the previous year. A couple of schools went down. Lincoln maintained at 98.6. And once again, you know, this is work that is rooted in the past that's representing today. So we expect these numbers to continue to go up also as a lot of our data cleansing processes and a lot of the academic pieces that Dr. Shepherd is putting in place come to fruition. So one of the big things people want to know is when kids leave your system, what do they do? So once again, this data only represents students who have walked across the stage and graduated. But KCPS traditionally, and as long as I've worked here, is that over 90% of our students fulfill this requirement. And what this requirement is, is 180 days after they graduate, what are these kids doing? So you have to go to a two-year, four-year, technical, trade school, or if you are a CTE student, you have to be gainfully employed 180 days after your graduation. KCPS did raise back up to 90.8. Our three-year average will be above 90% again, and we will receive our full 10 points on our APR for this standard. Questions?
I want to turn to my colleagues and begin to accept questions. Ms. Wolfsee?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm on Slide 10, and I just, I'm trying to reconcile what you said, maybe I didn't quite get it. 10 and 12. So what was, I didn't quite correlate between these two is on 10, it's showing, you know, that we have the two schools, and I guess if you add East in there too, but that, you know, you have students taking it, taking the course, but at least if I read 10 correctly, at Northeast and Southeast, did we not have anyone, is that that they didn't pass the exam or didn't take the exam?
So if you look at Southeast, the AP exam is at zero, which means zero students surpassed the threshold on their score.
Passed the threshold on their score.
Right. But the 16.5 are the percent of students who
Took it.
Who took it. That's right. That's exactly right.
Took the class or took the class?
Took the class. An AP class.
Can you then correlate, so what I wrote on 12, Slide 12, was these are who sat for the test, so these numbers should then be the number of students at Southeast that basically took those AP courses. Am I reading that right?
You are not.
Okay. How do I correlate these two slides, or can I not?
You cannot.
Okay.
So what this slide is, so this previous slide, is graduates.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
This is 9 through 12.
Got it.
Right? So this is a larger picture of who's, of what we're doing with AP, and this is what will be represented on our APR. So yep, this is all students in KCPS.
That sat for the test?
That sat for the test.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Those are their scores on top.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hogan?
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the detailed presentation. Couple of questions. Slide 6 on ACT scores. So you mentioned the appeals that are still outstanding. Do you have a, do you have an idea of how many of those appeals there are out there in 18 and 19? Maybe it's only 19 at this stage, I'm not sure.
No, it's only 19, sir.
Okay, 19. And how that would affect the overall ACT score?
It will raise it. It will raise it. We expect all of our appeals to be accepted. We have documentation behind them. They're sitting on them right now. I believe we have at least 40 students that we had no score for, that we've submitted an appeal for.
Will it raise it, you believe, above the 2018 score a year?
For ACT or for the whole?
ACT.
Uh, yes. Well, it might, Mr. Hogan. A lot of this depends, once again, on what these students scored, because we're getting into the proportionate weight again. So if these students all scored around 2021, it's going to have a significant effect.
Yeah, I'm trying to just understand trends, right? Across ACT, it's gone down the last couple of years.
It has, and a lot of this goes into the proportionate weight. It does. If the students score better, they get a higher score. 26 or above is a 1.25. If you just fill your name out on the ACT, you get a .25.
Interesting. Okay. I can't wrap my head around that. Slide 9, which is the CCR indicator 4.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have a sense for why every high school declined this year, with the exception of Central and Lincoln?
I do, sir. A lot of our non-magnet schools, and even, not magnet, non-signature, and even Paseo get a lot of their points through CTE. And we had two very important CTE classes that did not actually give their EOC, which would give them the IRC, their end-of-course assessment, which would actually give them their industry-recognized credential. And that was auto collision and and EMT.
Sorry, there was alphabet soup in there. So you mentioned EOC and
End of
I just want to make sure I understand. Can you rephrase that and then?
Sure. So there were personnel issues at Manual Tech, and we lost some instructors, so we were not able to give the end-of-course exam that would demonstrate and lead into the industry-recognized credential. So basically, a bunch of kids in those classes didn't test and didn't even have an opportunity to get an IRC because we lost instructors. And we know that a lot of those kids who take these courses filter in from our neighborhood schools. So they basically, they didn't test, Mr. Hogan.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, I mean, I guess a couple of questions, kind of similar stuff. So it was mentioned at one point in time that only Lincoln has IB. Is that for some specific reason?
That is a, you know, a relic of the signature school, magnet school past.
So theoretically, at this point, is no one of that caliber in any other of our high schools that is worth creating a program for? I mean, this
No, I mean, I'm not going to say that.
Fair, fair.
I think that's where we're focusing the AP on, the Advanced Placement.
Right.
Which is very much parallel.
Absolutely, and let me just answer that, because you don't, number one, IB is extremely expensive. When I worked in the Houston Independent School District, there was one high school designated, I think it was Lamar, Marla, when I was there, but there, and it was one school that was designated for IB. Everybody else was able to offer AP and dual credit, but if you wanted to do IB, that was the one high school you went to. And so that, what we're doing at Lincoln is not something that's uncommon as far as IB is concerned. The issue where the inequities are created is when you don't have AP classes being offered at your neighborhood schools, you don't have dual credit opportunities being offered at your neighborhood schools. That's where you really begin to have the huge inequities, and you won't be able to hit these goals absent of that. And that's part of the reason why we made a very intentional decision that every high school through our avid program would be offering AP classes. So when you look at that slide on 12, you begin to see a lot more of your kids that are in the ninth and 10th grade that are now starting to take those AP classes, because at one point, there were some high schools that didn't offer AP at all for our students.
AP courses and IB courses have very similar outcomes for students. You can carry college credit forward, you get advanced coursework, they help you with college admissions. It's just a slightly different program.
Sure, and I guess that's, I mean, even the perception
of the inequity is, I guess, what I question here, and my apologies for the phrasing of the question, but, I mean, that seems like something, and I applaud the work as to adding the other elements to help provide something that was suitable, but there is an inherent, there is a difference. And so I don't know, that's something that we're chasing at this point. So that's one area of that. And the other is, I think it's Slide 6, right? You said no points. Does that, no points means those students didn't take any of the tests, or they didn't necessarily graduate?
No.
Please explain that again.
Only graduates are counted in this calculation, so anybody who's represented in here got a diploma from KCPS. We have compulsory education up to age 21. We have a lot of kids who have severe disabilities. We have a lot of kids who transfer in, we have a lot of dropout recovery. So when we've dug into these numbers, a lot of these kids are from our Mo options programs, they're age 20 or 21, out of East High School, they're late transfers in, and we do attribute a lot of these kids, and there's not a lot, that don't have an assessment to people filling out, you know, not putting KCPS on their form and not turning in their stuff to counselors so they can enter it in the system. So a lot of these are hard-to-serve students.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you for this presentation. So I have a couple of questions and then an exhortation for my fellow board members, so please bear with me. The first question I have is, what kinds of presence do our local industry leaders in the area have in our schools, to your knowledge?
I believe I would be unprepared to answer that question.
Like just CERNers and just other companies being in the schools or participating? Sorry. I know it's going to be a hard
So we do have varying people who are in our schools, and one of the things that we're working on right now is having career mentors for our students. And then when we think about some of the competitions that our kids, like we have a math, engineering competition coming up, so Burns and McDowell, excuse me, will actually be coming to provide some mentorship for our students as they prepare for that competition. So we do have that presence in our schools, and, but we are looking to do more, which is the work that I was speaking to you about earlier, about our college and career readiness, because a lot of that is around making sure that kids have access to industry people who can actually mentor them and guide them in the right direction. And so I think a lot of that will be a part of our visioning as we move forward in that area.
Thank you for that, and that helped me to my next question, which was just, from your perspective, what can we do as a board and as a community? So we have, you know, some people here today and hopefully some people watching, but just what can we do? Because when I look at these numbers, I don't, you know, especially the declines, which are really, you know, kind of heartbreaking, not saying that, you know, but there's something that's, I think, a broader effect that's happening, a broader effect in the community that would lead less people to take tests or to graduate or something like that. And so I know that we are, we are part of a broader team right now, and so I just wonder what is it that you would recommend? What would you ask of the community?
Well, one of the things that I know that some of this is really accountability on us. First of all, we've got to make sure, as we transition high school principals, we've got to make sure that they understand what the indicators are and what it is that, how we get our accountability points. And then also, we've got to make sure that on our transcripts, and this is one of the things that we have on the agenda, to begin looking at our transcripts, what is it that we need to add to those transcripts, which would help us to make sure that every kid, by the time they graduated, they've had access to at least one IB, one or AP class, they've had access to at least one industry-recognized credential, that they've had access to all of these things. And what we would like the community to do is really make sure, so we have Naviance, and we need to do more training on Naviance, because it is a tool that is used to help parents to navigate some of these things, so we can make sure their students graduate college and career-ready. That tool does a whole lot, and we probably need to educate you guys on that, but we need to educate our community more on that. But we need to make sure that we have systems and processes in place, which is why, again, we're having that retreat, because we realize that not all of this is on others, this is things that we need to own. And we're owning those, and that's the reason why we feel like we need to come back together and figure out what is our direction, and how do we ensure that all of our children are graduating having taken ACT or SAT, having some type of industry-recognized credential, having taken at least one AP or IB, because it's not college or career-ready, it's college and career-ready. You know, we don't want kids to choose one way or the other, we want to expose them to rigor, and also an industry-recognized credential, so if they graduate and they decide, hey, I want to delay this, I want to delay college, I have something that I can take care of myself by doing. Or if I want to go right on to college and I want to use this to pave my way through, I have been exposed to rigor that can get me through college. But a lot of this is a responsibility of ours, educating our high school principals, creating systems that lend themselves to success for all students, and making sure that we have a clear vision, a clear pathway as far as our theory of action and all of our goals and objectives to get all of our kids to this point.
Just one last quick point, and this is just where I think everybody represented, including my colleagues up here and everybody. So I know the city and other companies do internships for high schoolers in the summer, the city has a big program, and there are others. I just want to encourage everybody to consider and be an advocate in your workplaces, companies you might own or otherwise, to host these interns, because I truly, I will always be a broken record in saying that when you feel like there is something to look forward to, and if you feel like you have value and you're being poured into, that is, that can be what it takes to get you that push over the edge and say, okay, it's worthwhile to do these last few years and to stick with it, and there is hope. So I do think that the representation from Kansas City, not just KCPS, but metro schools has been poor in those programs, and I know that the transportation issue, the transportation changes that were made, I think, are very promising as far as the free access to students now. So I'm just hoping that going into next summer, we have more participation in those types of workforce opportunities, so, thank you.
Ms. Wolfsee?
I would like to go back to Slide 9. The question that, I think it was my Board Director Hogan asked about the decline, and you had talked a little bit about we lost instructors for those two courses, but I'm struck, and I don't need an answer tonight. Dr. Bedell, I may try to see if we could get an update in a board packet. What I am struck by is, not only did we have a decline, you know, 18 and 19, but in some of these same East, Paseo, and Northeast a little bit, but not really, there was a decline the year before, yet I see the total opposite at Central Academy. And so I would just like a little more, like digging a little bit more to understand, what is Central doing? Is it something Central's doing? Was it something underlying? But maybe even, I just, I see that it could be the two classes, but there just seems to be something else there as well.
So Ms. Wolfsee, there was one other thing that I did mention. It is our lack of certified dual-credit instructors. We went down from, I believe, six or seven courses to one course over a period of years. So we only had one certified dual instruction course in KCPS, that was outside of the middle college.
So
Or the early college, I apologize.
Outside of ECA over at
Correct, correct, ma'am.
MCC campus.
Yes.
So that is, so I just want to make sure I understand this. A dual-credit instructor is somebody that doesn't necessarily have to sit on MCC's campus, they can actually be at the high school level and teaching that class in, at the physical high school, and the student can get course credit for that?
Yeah, so they have to have 18 hours in their content area. And so one of the things that we're working on now is we have about 25 to 30 teachers that we're looking at certifying for that, because in some cases, it was at Lincoln and Paseo where we had the dual-certified teachers. So this way, it can be more equitable, because then we can have it at all of the schools, but it is going to take them a year and a half to get the certification. They have to take the courses, so.
And there's, I apologize, 18 graduate hours in their content area.
Ms. Cortez?
So that was actually one of I'm going to lose this battle again. At our, so where we sit currently, we have one instructor who is dual-credit certified?
As of SY19, we have not actually turned in all of our official stuff this year, so I can't speak to that, maybe Dr. Davis can. Maybe Dr. Davis can?
Okay. One?
Do you know how many we have this year? Dr. Davis?
First question.
Yeah.
We may have two at this point. We have an arts teacher at Paseo, and then we have a person who teaches college algebra at Lincoln College Prep. We've had an English teacher. I don't know if they're still here this year. I'd have to look.
And my second question, sorry, Ms. Manzer, relates to, let's project forward a little bit, right? Because it's my, it's my understanding that on slide, I think it's 12, a lot of those students are underclassmen.
Correct, ma'am.
Who took those AP exams in school year 19.
Correct.
Is it our expectation, this is the first time those students will have been introduced to a course with the rigor of an AP course, is it our expectation that as they take an AP course as a sophomore, they take an AP course as a junior, we expect to see their retention and capacity with that information increase their scores?
Yes. And one of the things that we also have to do is, we got to make sure that we expose our AP teachers. That's a very important component of a kid being able to successfully pass an AP exam, making sure that the teacher is prepared. So we are looking at mentors in other districts who've taught the course. And what the data shows is that over the years, the longer that you actually teach an AP course, the better you're getting, especially when you become a scorer and you get an opportunity to see how the exams are scored, which are, a lot of the exam is written. When you get a chance to be on that committee that actually scores, then you're able to better teach the course. So we're trying to get our teachers to be able to access those type things. And so what our pathway is, we put them in human geography, and a lot of those students were avid students. Avid students actually have to take at least one AP course. And these are middle-of-the-road students. You're not looking at kids who are on the high end, you're looking at kids who are very average, and you're pushing them towards college and pushing them towards rigor so that they can understand that they too can attain these things, even if they're not straight-A students. And so they start with human geography. This year, they're in AP US History. Then we'll move them to another 11th grade course, but we're building that pathway as we go. But that's certainly not the only course they have access to, because we do offer AP Language, AP Literature. We offer Psychology in some courses, in some schools. We offer Computer Science. But the pathway for these, we've never offered it at ninth grade, so the pathway for those students is going to be a little bit better than everyone else, because it's always been 11th and 12th grade. Now you get Human Geo at ninth grade, and you can take AP US History in 10th, and we're looking at other things that we can bring onboard. But it's always based on personnel. Who do we have that can actually teach the course? Who is actually certified in that content area? And who's willing to go get the training so that they can teach it at the level that it needs to be taught? Then there's a lot of other things that are involved with AP. I mean, you do have to do the additional planning, and you've got to do the additional reading, all of those things that the students have to do as a teacher, you have to be willing to do as well. So it's about us trying to build our cadre, if you will, so that we can have a nice AP program that all of our children can access.
And let me, let me just add to that. The first summer, I think we, the summer of 17, was when we sent our first group of teachers, some to Rice University, which has one of the top AP prep programs, and then we've sent some to Washburn University here, you know, on the Kansas side. And so last year, the other piece is being able to make sure that we're retaining and keeping those teachers after we make that investment. But as you can see with these numbers with AP, because of that intentionality and having people go and get the training, you know, now we are in a position where more and more students are able to, we're able to open up more sections and students are able to take these classes. And so we're going to continue to do that, but I think the dual-credit piece was something that, as a superintendent, I don't have a problem saying this on air, caught me off guard. I just wasn't aware that we had declined, you know, the amount of teachers or lost amount of teachers that probably do certified. So that's something that we will work on and we'll begin to also see that trend tick up more in that area.
Just one, one other point to go with what Dr. Bedell said is, we have asked if they get this, this master's degree or these 18 hours, that they're staying for four years after the degree? Because that's part of the issue, is retaining who we train. And so if that way, if there's, we, so we've had them, they'll have to sign a contract before they can be put into the program. And that way, we have, they're getting that extra rigor, they're getting that extra content. So now they can be the dual-credit AP person for that building. So that's the long-term point.
Mr. Hogan?
Is it possible to, how do I want to say this? What percentage of the overall APR scores does this represent for us? Like what's the, what's the maximum sort of possibility here?
For the Advanced Placement?
Yep.
It is 10 out of a standard of 140. This year, it will be 10 points out of 130 with the exclusion of the social studies assessment.
Some terrible math. Is that 8%, 7% or so?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that?
You're not that bad. Too close.
So I mean, it's a, it's a chunk, right? It's a pretty big chunk.
Absolutely, sir.
And so it seems to me like we need to really, really sort of hone in and focus on this. I don't know if there's a way to incent teachers to get those certifications or whatever we have to do. I mean, it's a sizable, it's almost a tenth of our total scores. Feels like there's, there should be a tremendous amount of emphasis on this one, so.
Yeah, and it, it, it isn't just AP, Mr. Hogan, that is correct. It's AP, IB, DC, and TSA IRCs. So acronym central. Advanced Placement, International Back-Lawiate, Project Lead the Way, and Industry-Recognized Credentials. So it's really like, it's a portfolio model. So that will take quite a bit, but I do agree with you. This is a significant portion. KCPS has traditionally been on status, which means our three-year average, no matter if we went up or down, gives us points every single year. So we are above the status, the floor for the status calculation in this. But you are correct, we do need to pay attention to this, and I believe that attention is being paid to this. It just takes a little bit to plant the seeds, to water them, and then to watch it grow. And I believe that that's happening right now with the introduction of the freshman and sophomore-level AP courses. And as these students are exposed to more rigor, we also expect to see gains in stuff like the ACT assessment, because we know that this stuff all has a correlational effect on each other. If students take more advanced coursework, they do more writing, they succeed more on the ACT, they succeed more on the SAT, those type assessments.
Mr. Barca?
I may have missed this, so help me put this together. If a student is on an advanced track, they would have had to start at some certain point? And if that is true, not true, sounds like, so students can enter at any point into this? And is that part of the variety that you offer versus? Okay. That's great. Okay.
And that's very important considering the mobility in our district. We know that we get students at any point in time in their academic career.
Right. And then also, from my standpoint, I was in a situation where it was one teacher who would almost not let me in, and I want to make sure that there's no linchpins like that too, that are creating barriers for our students.
I think that's a very fair statement, Mr. Barca.
I have a couple of questions, a few questions here, and some may sound repetitive just to make sure I'm understanding things. A couple of things I've heard that are things that I'm hoping that we can talk further about, Dr. Bedell, that we'll have opportunities for more dialogue on. It sounds like what's, it sounds like it would be valuable to have some kind of plan regarding the training and engagement of families in the use of Naviance. If I'm hearing that correctly, that will be very powerful. And so I'm hope, I'm looking forward to hearing more as we go through this year about what that plan will be and what kind of assurances there will be and how we pursue getting parents trained on that and using it regularly with their students as a tool. If I understood correctly, Mr. Reynolds, so the, when we have the participation in the test decline, are, I didn't quite understand this, do school counselors or who's making sure that students are taking those tests that a student wouldn't just not take that test?
So my understanding is that that is a graduation requirement, and that should be part of the graduation checkout process. So what we've seen, and I don't want to make blanket statements, is that a lot of times the paperwork will be turned in, but it won't be actually entered into our SIS system, our student information system. So a paper document does the state no good, right? So we need that to be entered into our SIS where it's in a formal place where we can then upload it to the state. So those are measures that we are taking into consideration with our counselors and our registrars. We're putting formal measures into place to make sure that no kid gets overlooked when they're putting this stuff into place and making sure that all students have their graduation requirements firmly in place by their senior year.
So there's, we're building a system that it should assure that students understand early on, not late in their senior year, but early on in, either in their junior, senior years, that there's that expectation that somebody will be ensuring that that's completed.
Yeah, Ms. Manzer, there is. There's also something else. I mean, this is a very complicated issue. There's also, what plays into this also is the GO3 graduation code. So if you graduate on goals, we have a choice. We can give you a GO3 graduation code, which exempts you from CCR status, so you don't have to take the college and career readiness exams if you have the GO3 graduation code. But if we take the GO3 graduation code, you count as a dropout in our graduation cohort. So we have to choose if we want the CCR points, the college and career readiness points, or the graduation rate points. So a lot of those kids that are in the north wing at East High School, they're either a GO1, where they don't have to take the CCR assessments, because a lot of those kids are severely disabled. And we've had this conversation with the state, and they do not bend on this. Or they take the CCR, or we put them as a GO1, where they count for our graduation rate, but then they also filter into our CCR calculations, and we take the hit on CCR.
I, I think that the other, I mean, I think I, I think I'm mostly fixated probably on the declining participation, and that's, that's concerning for me. And then I think the second thing, and I don't necessarily expect an answer today, but it sounds like there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done in developing the cohort of teachers who are equipped and prepared to be certified AP and dual-credit teachers, and that that's an area of enormous need for us, right? Because it sounds like we have, we have the desire and we have the determination that we will offer that, but we're limited in our staff. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, Dr. Bedell, or have I misunderstood that?
No, I mean, we, I think that's what we're working on now, is just making sure that we get people certified in order to be able to teach the dual-credit and, because we got, how many teachers?
We have like two, two now.
But how many have we identified?
We have more than 30.
Yeah. So that is, and it's going to take time to get that pipeline built up.
And your, your assessment is correct, but I would urge the board to wait till final information is available. So we do need to make sure that all these kids do take these assessments, all these graduates and students are prepared to graduate by board-approved graduation requirements. But I would urge the board to maintain, or withhold judgment until our final numbers are available, which will be very soon.
And Dr. Bedell, have you all set any kinds of goals regarding, like we have a targeted cohort of about 30 teachers that you've identified? Have you, have, do we have any kind of goals in place so that we're helping ensure moving those teachers along? Because I understand it's a considerable larger commitment on their end in terms of their training and preparation, is that correct, in order to take that on? And so it's not just saying, hey, by the way, it's really substantial work you've described. Do we have any kind of numeric goal that we've set that in a year, we might be here today, but in a year, in the next school year, we, our goal is to hit this number of teachers?
We hope to be able to have all of that information for you as we finish all of our, the different times that we meet for the retreats that we spoke about, the college and career readiness retreats. What you see here is evidence of a strategy, but not a system. When you have high scores one year, and then you have every other year, things start to go different directions, then there may have been a strategy to get the scores here to where they are, but there's not a system. Because if there was a system, then it would still be present right now. So what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we build this system so that if nobody in this room is here, there's a system in place that will guarantee that we continue to watch over kids and make sure that they have access to at least one of these indicators.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions on this presentation? All right. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, board.
Dr. Bedell, I believe you will introduce the next presentation.
Absolutely. And we will have Ms. Linda Quinley, who will come up and conduct the presentation on MBE, WBE. And we have staff members from our procurement department, I believe, Linda?
Yes.
That's here tonight to offer assistance as needed. But we will conduct our MBE/WBE update to the board and the community.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Manzer, Dr. Bedell, and board. Ms. Thompson isn't able to be with us tonight, so you are stuck with just me, but we do have a team here to help. We're happy to bring you what really is the first full official MBE/WBE update to the board since our policies have been enriched last, just this year, this calendar year. I do want to real quickly introduce the team to you so that you know who we have sitting here on the front row, these three folks here. Our procurement team collectively, well, not, they have a bigger team, but these are the folks who work specifically with us in MBE/WBE, Mr. Wiseman, Ms. Blue, and Kim Mason. So thanks to them for being here tonight. They'll be able to help with the detailed questions because they're the experts. Important to note, as you look at that, they have a significant amount of experience overall, but none of them are individually, personally, all day, every day responsible for MBE/WBE. We are not a city or a county that has the staffing resources to fully dedicate people to this, but collectively, as a team, they work to carry that load. So we wanted to start with information around what drives our guidelines related to MBE/WBE goals and processes. There is an administrative policy, DGDA, which I believe you have a copy of if you want to study later, or study now while I talk, that is a Missouri School Boards Association policy. So it is an administrative policy versus a board policy. That policy was amended January of this calendar year with the current goals and targets and some of the information that we're going to talk through. I won't read to you, but at the very bottom of this slide, you see the definitions of what is an MBE and what is a WBE, the key factor that 51% owned and controlled in both of those categories. So inside that policy, some of the highlights are that it does create contract-specific goals based on market availability. It directs us, allows us to break down larger projects into smaller projects. A great example of that are our recent projects at Lincoln Middle School and Lincoln Athletic Fields. We intentionally used construction management on those projects to hopefully take large projects into something smaller that would allow for smaller firms to participate, because a lot of times, the need and the ability to bond and bid a GC kind of a job that is a total package creates barriers and limits for some of our smaller businesses. And so we found that to be highly successful. We'll look at that in just a second. These are just a couple of examples of the MBE/WBE vendors on those projects. So additional highlights in the policy, it does narrow our focus of diversity, inclusion to minority and women. It accepts certain certifications. So there are multiple certifications across the nation and state that a vendor can choose, but based on recommendation, these six that you have listed are the certifications we accept. Additionally, we do reserve the right that when it makes sense to accept others based outside, but largely, we target and encourage these six listed certifications. So in this policy, as of January of 2019, we did adopt a combined goal of 18.3% of applicable spend, and we'll talk about what that means in a few minutes. The MBE goal, the minority business goal, is 9.8%, and the women, the WBE women business goal is 8.5%. Was aggressive when we set it, but that's what goals are to be. And so we knew that. We were optimistic of our ability to reach them in year one under these new guidelines because we had those two Lincoln projects going on, and we knew that that was going to give us a great opportunity. We'll look at that a little bit, unfortunately. look at that a little bit. Unfortunately, while we had huge success in those two contracts, they didn't all line up in one fiscal year. So we didn't, we didn't necessarily hit the targets due to that. So you can see here, this is the Lincoln Middle School project, the list of the vendors, the MBE WB, WBE vendors, and their total of four point five million dollars. And that is spent to date. So we aren't fully spent out, as you well know, these, that number will change a little bit. But collectively on that project compared to the budget, we're at thirty-five point five percent of the total project. So again, wildly successful on this individual project because of how we did the work. Lincoln Field, a little bit different at only six point oh five percent. And this is where you start seeing, while it's a construction project, that we tend to have better success in finding vendors to specialized. Turf is only available by a few companies across the nation, is a major portion of this spend, and there are no MBE WBE vendors who provide field turf. So you can't always accomplish what you want because of the special nature of what you're doing. But collectively between these projects, we're just under twenty-nine Then there are several pages of report that we won't read to you, but want to show you the tracking level. This is tier one for last fiscal year. These numbers and totals are going to look a little different. I know we gave you some preliminary information a few weeks ago in a Friday update. Those have been updated and changed because now the year end is closed and we are able to give you more accurate information. Yes, sir?
I'm not as good at numbers as you are, Ms. Quinley. You're throwing out a lot of numbers and I see the numbers in print, but I'm trying to work percentages. I've always thought that the budget of the school district is something like two hundred and ninety million, two hundred and eighty million, and I'm seeing numbers like four million. I mean, what are you using for your percentages? What's your base? Are you using the total budget or is there some kind of subsidiary budget, special budget that you're saying the four million is a percentage of some smaller budget?
I'm going to answer a bit of that in a minute, if you'll let me, because we're getting to it. But in this case where you see that four point eight million dollars, that is specifically and solely, we're looking at just these two projects as an example of how individual projects work. But now we're going to look at compared to total budget, but even still you'll see the number different. And if I don't explain that well enough, please, please let me know. So on these slides, this is tier one, MBE and WBE certified, tier one meaning I have the primary contract. Okay? And just an example, this is coming straight out of our system with a little bit of manipulation to make it look prettier, even though this is just a lot of numbers and words and isn't that pretty? But just for you to see the types of vendors that we're looking, working with, there are a few pages there and that you'll see vendors as little as a few hundred dollars because we are tracking absolutely everyone as long as that certification code is entered into the system. And so, Mr. Wassersstrom, to your question, in tier one spend last year as we've closed out the year end, we're at just under seven point two million dollars of eligible spend. And in tier two, we're at just under six hundred thousand dollars. And tier two is a diverse vendor who is a subcontract of some other contractor. So when you look at this slide, you see in parentheses, a vendor name behind the vendor who was paid, and that is the vendor who held the prime contract and they went out and sought out some MBE WBE assistance in their contract. We encourage our partners to do that as much as we possibly can. So what does that mean in the way of numbers when looking at the total budget for the year? So while we saw high numbers on the Lincoln Middle School project in particular, when we look at, we've spent roughly seven point eight million dollars last year on tier one and two certified. We compare that to fifty-five million rather than the two hundred million plus total budget. Because you have to keep in mind that the majority of our total budget, Mr. Wassersstrom, is people. So salaries and benefits have to be backed out of that two hundred plus million dollars because clearly we're not individually MBE WBEs. There are considerable number of other lines. We have them listed down there in kind of the small student transportation. There are no MBE WB opportunities in student transportation, and that's fifteen million dollars of our budget. So basically we reduce our denominator to the eligible spend based on market, which is fifty-five million dollars. And so if you take that seven point eight million dollars divided into fifty-five million dollars, you're going to get that of our eligible spend that could have been spent with an MBE WBE, it was fourteen point one five percent last year for tier one, or for certified, I'm sorry, and, which is about four point one five percent below the goal. Then we add in non-certified, because again, we do work with some vendors who have elected not to be certified or are not certified by an agency that we accept and get to count. And you'll see those listed if you just browse the page where it says U MV, that means they're uncertified. So this list goes up then, and I can't read that there, eight point three million dollars from the seven plus million dollars previously. When we add in tier two, that number stays the same. So we get to eight point nine million dollars, again, out of that just under fifty-five million dollars, or sixteen point one six percent last year of available spend, which is two point one four percent short of our goal for last year. And again, we were lifted up last year because of those Lincoln projects. And we'll have a little bit of that as we're not yet paid out on those this year, but not as much of it this year. Here's a four-year historical, and you see in the far column, the total diverse spending that we have, sixteen seventeen being the high point year at seventeen point seven four percent. In that year, we had two projects that helped us hit there, Central Middle School renovation and Northeast Middle School. And the timing of those was they, that they started after school year and finished as the next school year began. And so we were able to get most of that into one fiscal year, and it really did lift up the numbers for sixteen seventeen. And we had double digits each of the last three years. Each of the last three years, we have been spending either certificate of participation money or other monies on some of these major projects. And just, not as an excuse, but a warning, those monies are pretty much spent up as of now. So that does reduce the kinds of projects we would do that normally help us get closer to goal. So interesting that we are unusual in Missouri schools and the only that we can find in Kansas City and schools who have MBE WBE goals at all. This tends to be something that you'll see more in cities and municipalities than you will in public schools, partly that is because of a more restrictive state guidelines on how we bid and spend than other agencies and businesses and municipalities might have. But just a list for you there that locally, there's no one else but us in the public education business making this effort. So kudos to this board and this administration that for several years now, this has been a, a goal and a target. So we wanted to share with you some of our internal monitoring goals that are going on. We do track the diversity certifications in our finance system. That is new effort. I, how long have we been on ALIO? Four years? We've been using this, this year four. We've been using this finance system for four years now. And so this, you know, the first thing you do is you get up and running so you can pay bills and pay people and do, and get the reports that are required. And then this was additional work that over the last couple of years has really been refined so that we can actually track accurately and share information. So kudos to our team that they have done that work. We also track at bid time, those folks who are bringing in tier two to help themselves meet what we want them to do when they bid. And we, we track the actual contract order back to the actual spend and, and work and create reports for you guys now quarterly. We're refining those as we work with that and work with the system to make it be as user-friendly for this purpose as possible. So during 2019, I won't read to you, but you'll see the list of things that, that our procurement team has done, where they have been and how they are engaging with both the business community and with other organizations that focus on MBE WBE so that we have exposure and have the opportunity to learn and grow in this area. This is an example for you of, not only are we doing that individually, again, with this small team that have other duties also throughout the day, but when we do engage partners, we ask them to help us with this work. And so this is just an example of when we contracted with McCowen Gordon for construction management at Lincoln Middle School and Lincoln Field, we asked them to tell us, how are you going to go out and help us meet and exceed the project goals that we had set on that project? So you see the different organizations and groups that they met with as they did that work. And then here's just some of the how they did that. Workshops that were held specifically about our project and what the project packages would, would be, bilingual print ads, social media, a variety of things. So they are more experienced and refined in how they get out and do that. So these are the kinds of people that we can learn from as we continue to do that as well. So specific efforts inside KCPS that we're working on right now. Our team here tonight hold one-on-one meetings with vendors to talk to them about not only how do they do business with us, but if they're not certified, how do they get certified? They refer them to groups and agencies who can help them with that because we can't certify them. We can just tell them how to go do that and where to go do that. We do give higher consideration to an allowable limit by a point system when we are looking at bids and evaluations when there are MBE WBE participation, because we want to encourage that. There are a little bit of limitations that we have on that, but we do it within what we are allowed to do to encourage that. We also talk very clearly that we expect our partners. If, if they don't qualify individually, how can you bring someone else to the table who does? You'll see here that we have worked on our diversity webpage. I was recently with some of these folks out at Cerner at an event that they hosted for MBE WBE, and we heard some feedback that from a local firm that helps MBE WBEs find work and get, get at the table. And we heard complaints about how all the websites were difficult to actually get to and find. And so this website, it's, it's got some great eye-catching stuff. It talks about our policy, talks about calendars, upcoming projects. At the very bottom is a list of vendors that are certified and registered with us. So if I'm going to bid on something and I don't qualify for MBE WBE, but I want to include that, I can click on that and find some possible partners because it says what they do. What we have just done after that conversation is made this forward-facing. This used to be an internal page for our use, but we made it now an external page so that our bidders can have greater exposure to this as well. And you'll see also down there on the right, they talk about the different certifications. So recent accomplishments, each of the last two years, our team has won the Turning Contacts into Contracts Award from Midwest Supplier Diversity. And that's really about being out in these public environments and these opportunities, making connections with people who hadn't thought about doing with business with us or that we had not known to do business with either, and then actually turning that into contracts. And so to have gotten that award two years back to back, we're pretty proud of that and excited that the team keeps themselves out, visible, and public. There are challenges to meeting and exceeding goals, which is the whole idea of goals, right? They are not supposed to necessarily be easy to accomplish. The limited certification options is, is a challenge because if I'm not listed in that six and you don't get to count me, that's, you know, I may argue that my certification is as valuable as the six we've listed, but it's not one that we have specifically said in our policy we get to use and count. Additionally, some of the smaller vendors don't want to go through the process. It's time-consuming. I'm sure there are some fees involved to a certain extent, and they simply choose not to be certified. That doesn't mean they aren't great people that we don't want to do business with. It just means we're not going to get to claim them when we count our totals. We are specialized in public education in our spending, which is why that denominator is a different number than the two hundred and twenty million dollars. But if you think about what we do buy, there are really a more limited amount of things. Textbooks tend to come from companies that, you know, textbooks, special education services or, or social service agencies that we use. We're not going to find that those are MBE WBE-owned if they're owned at all. And so that is a challenge in our industry. In Kansas City, where we have the greatest success, as I mentioned earlier, is in that repair and maintenance and construction area, which KCPS happens to have limited and dwindling resources for. We continue to be challenged by making sure that our budget managers, each of us sitting here that have budgets we're responsible for, are aware and focused on that when we're out figuring out who we want to do business with. So we need that constant pressure and reminder with our teams. And then there is some state legislation that prevents us from setting quotas and having those kinds of targets. And then specifically when you get to certain, certain levels, competitive bidding is required and you have to be careful there. So what's next for us to try to hit our goals at a higher level? We want to do a more intensive, more thorough job of educating our end users in the departments, helping them navigate that website, know how to go look, helping them get in the practice of going to look and see, how can I use an MBE WBE, set some department goals. We've talked specifically about NIT because they have one of our larger budgets where they buy stuff and how we can set some goals in that, that budget alone for them that will help us meet our overall goals. Our team has added, everyone, when you're going to spend thirty five hundred dollars, they have to provide procurement with three quotes at this point in time. We're going to require that one of those needs to be a diverse vendor. And so we know that people have actually made the effort. We also want to make the work that of a broader group. We really have to empower the departments to go find their own MBE WBEs, not rely on the folks who sit in procurement and support you all day who aren't experts in your field. But who's, who's out there? Talk to other people and help us, help us find potential partners. We're going to monitor who's, who's the city adding to their website of potential vendors and try to do some things that just keep us open to whoever's coming into the marketplace that we might do business with. We're going to model the work of others. One of the things we learned from McCowen Gordon was using social media as a way to reach out and reach some small businesses versus the ad in the star or the ad in the paper, papers that we add in, that we advertise in. We want to create relationships with some of the organizations who are going to be able to have greater contact, contact for us, we're not currently members of, and we want to become more active in, for example, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Black Chamber of Commerce, so that we become known as someone to think about bidding on and we create relationships and know others who could do our work. So we continue to just talk about what are we going to do because we know we can only get better from here. We know we have work to do. Little things like spotlighting diverse vendors and showcasing them and showing off their work to make sure that the bigger public knows the quality that we get from some of these small, smaller partners. But again, not get discouraged by a goal. These aren't quotas, these are goals. And we don't want to get discouraged by, gosh, we didn't hit it. So we have to keep our minds right and stay in the right place. Questions?
Mr. Wassersstrom?
The most exciting part of the literature that we distributed was the bit about KCPS getting the Midwest Supplier Diversity Exposition Award in two thousand nineteen for the dielectric job on Lincoln Athletic Field and turning contacts into contracts. Reaching out into the community.
Right.
Waiting for these schmoes to come to us, but going after them and saying, we want to give you business, we want to build you. That is great. Along the same lines, recently I went on one of the bus tours that the school district puts on where we go to forest pools and afterwards, the school district gives everybody a box lunch. And I got a great box lunch from Jason's Deli. I've been to other events and I think one of the other popular lunches is Panera's. Now, these are big corporate chains. Now, blocked from here is Ruby Jeans, fabulous place. Thirty First and Prospect, Eminem Deli, great place. It's a historic landmark in Kansas City. On, at fifty-five, forty-five, Troops, not too far from here, is the finest Jamaican restaurant in the Midwest. And if there's any problem getting them certified, they have one Jamaican lady at the cash register, the only other employee is her husband who's stationed in the kitchen. I'd certify that they're a minority enterprise because there's only two of them that are just a year old. You know, the thing is- You know, the thing is that there are so many great places to eat in Kansas City. White, black, Hispanic, we have everything. I'd like to see some of the box lunches once in a while be identifiably tied to part of the community that's underserved.
I appreciate that comment, yes.
That's an easy one.
Mr. Hogan?
So, I'll disagree with my colleague, Mr. Wasserstrom. I don't think that's the most exciting thing in the presentation at all. For me, the most exciting thing here, and the thing that I think will probably have the greatest impact is the point around when spending over thirty-five hundred dollars, you're required to have one MBE WBE contractor included, right? That's probably the best. It forces you to go do the work to find those vendors. So thank you for adding that.
Mr. Barca?
I will disagree twice and say that slide thirty-seven, if we can go back to that. Sorry, I know there's like five hundred of them.
That's a lot.
Dun-dah. This is incredible. From going from fourteen fifteen, from five percent, two percent to seventeen, eleven, fourteen. Kudos to you all, kudos to my colleagues from the former boards. This is incredible. This shows that although, yes, we've not reached the goal. I mean, you're doubling and tripling, quadrupling math things that Nate and I don't know how to do. It's incredible that you have jumped so quickly over such short spans of time. So kudos to you all for that.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Okay, I am going to agree that the Eminem sandwich is one of the best sandwiches I've ever had. But what I want to say about the presentation is I think the depth is outstanding. I think that I will be talking a lot about people should go back and watch this and pull up the deck. Because I think what it does is it explains, you know, we tend to talk here and not get into the details. And for some, that may not be important. But for a lot of people, this is very, this is an area that, one, we're leading in because according to the deck, we are the only school district in this area that has these goals. And that is kudos, I'd even say to, you know, Melissa Robinson was very keen on us making sure that we had those goals set. But what I particularly liked, you know, I knew it, I know numbers. I actually am very comfortable around numbers. But I guess I didn't put two and two together that really my denominator, I can't be counting all of the, I have to really understand that. And I think that the public now understanding that along with the nuance that, you know, this is our spend that we can actually spend on, be it IT or construction. Those two pieces of information make me think about looking at this percentage differently every time I look at it each year. So thank you very much for the depth.
So I want to say again, echo everybody's kudos to this small but mighty team that has shown your commitment as well as the board. So I do appreciate that. I don't think that when people talk about this in the community, a lot of times we understand, A, the denominator piece that was brought up, but also this idea that there is not a whole department as you would find in a city government that has, that is focused on MBW. This is ingrained in people's other duties. So I really appreciate that. And I also, it just occurred to me as I was listening to this, particularly your slide around the challenges of meeting these MBW goals. It just reminded me that neither this fine district nor this board is going to fully make up for all of the disinvestments and the racial inequities that have occurred over centuries in this state and in this country. And so when we talk about how difficult it is to find people who are staffed and ready with the necessary supplies to go after some of these contracts, we have to keep in that as we discuss this and we look for those and we talk to people in the community who are saying, hey, why didn't my friend get a contract? Like, we have to remember that there are other structural pieces into which we fit. And so I just wanted to keep that frame as well.
Thank you. Rita?
So thank you for the detailed presentation. As you may know, I spent most of my career in the construction industry. So this is all very, very familiar. A couple of questions to follow up. One, you talked about the need to really examine and set goals annually. Would you recommend that that process be done as part of our approval of a budget in June? Or is that something that, that, I mean, kind of what's the timing? What's the optimal timing in setting those annual goals?
So, you know, we want to leave those goals that the board set based on the study out there. For us, individual targets are something that we probably need to do. I think your idea of the budget is a great one. And I'm just going to think about the fact that we're going to burden Joe with really helping us get kicked off on a department level. But as we're zero-based budgeting, how can I really focus and say, this year I'm spending money in this area and I know I can get some good MBE WBE participation? So I think incorporating that into the budget for us as administration, both at the department level and then our target toward the goal, doing it at the time of the budget is probably the best thing to do.
Let me answer that one. It's an excellent question. And it really does go back to when we board prepped this morning. And there was some concerns around our ability to sustain these types of numbers, given the fact that a lot of our major capital project money is running out. And it really does go back to what Dr. Jones said, which is, you know, I love when board members say, because we sit in here, we pretend that we're all of you. And I want, I'm hoping that we on the money with some of these things we talk about. But one of the things we did talk about was, you know, the sixteen times wealth of our white counterparts compared, sixteen to one in wealth compared to our African-Americans here in Kansas City. And that was a part of the presentation we shared at MSBA. So ultimately, if you do not have income to have the large companies or to have the bandwidth to take on massive projects like this, then you may end up becoming someone that subcontracts with a large company. But then it reduces the percentage of MBE and WBE. And that makes it a lot harder. And what we, ultimately, in a lot of these areas where we do have to spend money throughout the years that are not capital, there just simply aren't enough people in the pipeline, in the pool to choose from to be able to hit these numbers. Now, and this is what I said to people, I don't own none of this money. I want to feed it right back into the community. And I've said that from day one. And I want to feed it back into the community in a very equitable way. But we also are aware of the disadvantages that a lot of our MBE and WBE have because there just aren't enough of them that have large enough businesses at scale that would allow for this to be sustainable. So we could do the Eminems, and I love Eminem, right? But that's a very tiny percentage that doesn't necessarily get us to the numbers we need to. But it's an excellent suggestion that I will make sure that we're all over, not just with Eminem, but other MBE restaurants and companies. That's, you're absolutely right. But I just want the community to know that this is a full-blown intention of ours that we feed back into this community because we recognize that you all feed right back into us. And I do want to be realistic about the goals. And I love what you just said because if we're not doing a lot of capital projects, then realistically, will we be able to come close to the eighteen percent aspirational goal that we have? And I just want to be realistic with people so people don't think that we're sitting here and we're neglecting and we're not trying to feed back into this community when we don't have some of these major capital projects going, so.
And it will be, it will be very difficult in nineteen twenty to match our fourteen fifteen. That doesn't mean we're not going to try to beat it or exceed it. But we're going to have to work a lot harder this year to do that.
And we need, and we want help. We don't have a problem. Give us, give us some suggestions on how we can do this. And, you know, we're willing to figure this out.
So to follow up on that, one of the things that you might consider is kind of connecting with kind of growing entrepreneurs. There are a couple of programs that I'm familiar with, but there are many others where companies that have some time in the marketplace and are scaling up, go for education and opportunities, the Scale Up Program, some of the business mentoring programs through the construction industry, a couple of the large contractors run kind of universities to provide more depth for some of their MBE WBE subcontractors. And even the programs run through the Missouri, I get the initials wrong, SVTDC over at the, it's at UMKC and they do classes. I've taught in those classes for a number of years. And they're typically ten to fifteen business owners. They've been in business anywhere from a year to three or four years. And they're trying to kind of grow from being a one-man or one-woman shop to scaling. But there are lots, and I see a lot of minority and women-owned businesses, particularly minority entrepreneurs in those programs, so kind of.
We would love those connections if you would help us make them.
Thank you, Linda Quinley. I just want to tell you, I am feeling very proud and gratified by this report. And just to kind of remind our audience and my colleagues here that the school board only adopted this revised policy in January of 2019. And we are right now just two days into October. So for me to see this kind of dedication and commitment and yield on that, on a goal which the board, the prior board understood was a very aggressive goal. We wanted something that was aspirational and that it was going to be a reach. It was truly the desire of the prior board and very much led by Board Chair Melissa Robinson that we should enact that policy. I am also really pleased, like my colleague, Mr. Barca, I'm very, very pleased when I look at the chart on slide thirty-seven because I think that tells a very powerful story. And for me, it tells the story of our commitment and our follow-through. I also understand too that the Lincoln Middle Project really was a unique opportunity, the Lincoln, you know, reopening and remodeling of Lincoln Middle created a unique opportunity for us to work with our construction partner, McAllen Gordon, to undertake a unique approach to recruiting, training, educating, and supporting a whole community of individuals there. I know there was an aggressive outreach and I know that there were a lot of, a lot of people brought in. And I think that just increased the visibility and created an environment that said, yes, we're here and we are interested in you. So I want to thank you for that. We are, according to our monitoring schedule, we're scheduled to have a, on our monitoring schedule, we have an MBE WBE report in January. We requested this report of you because there was so much interest among the current board to better understand where we were in our goals and what you were doing. But we are scheduled for an update again in January. And at this time, I don't believe we'll pull that off. But like, remove it from the schedule, I think it might be interesting to see, you know, where you feel you've advanced in some, in terms of some of the educational goals and outreach goals, you've continued to identify the memberships with the chambers that you said you would join and some other things like that. So any new work. But to come from January ninth to where we are today, I'm just, I have to say phenomenal. And thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments on this? Seeing none, thank you again for this report. Dr. Bedell, do you have any additional? With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening. That was awesome. Oops, I'm.